Sorry to be a little slow there this morning getting started, but we had a little technical problems up here, so we got it all going and glad to see each and every one of you here this morning. We'll begin with the approval of our minutes, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the minutes for the January 23rd and the February 13th meeting and found those to be appropriate and in good order. If I may, I'll make a motion to approve both of those at this time.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the minutes have been approved. Any items withdrawn or deferred? They have not. We'll move directly, I believe we have a quorum. You want to call the roll?
Jim Everwater.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
There.
Mike Kush.
Present.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Ray Gooch.
Here.
David Jones.
Here.
Chip Penyon. Marvin Whitworth.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
We do have the quorum.
We do have the quorum, so we'll move directly into our new business. Begins with submit for preliminary plan approval. Item A1, Jurgen Property, 231-001, 218 lots on 147.69 acres, zoned RM located along Highway 99. Middle Tennessee Developers Incorporated is the applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Hope everybody's doing well today. You'll recall this plan was deferred from last month's planning commission meeting due to drainage and sinkhole concerns. There was quite a bit of discussion on that. I'm not going to go into the whole lot of detail other than to say that, as a reminder, these are conventionally zoned lots. These are all at minimum of 15,000 square feet. No rezoning was required for this, so they do meet the minimum requirements of the district as far as the zoning is concerned. But, Mike, I'll turn it over to you for any additional comments you have. I believe the design engineer is here, and they're supposed to have their geotech engineer here as well to answer questions, so I'll turn it over to Mike for any preliminary comments.
All right, thank you, Douglas. We did meet with the design team on this project, and we discussed our concerns about this area with all the multiple sinkholes. And what they have done, they've come back and they've moved roads and lots off of major sinkholes. There are still sinkholes that will need remediation. They will need the guidance of a geotechnical engineer. But with what they've done, our comfort level is a little better. They still have a lot of design work to do. And one of the things that they propose to do would be to design the entire subdivision, drainage, grading, everything before they start even the first section. So we're going to have a full, complete design of what this subdivision will look like. But also, in doing so, there are several things that need to happen. And up on our screen are, from our subdivision regulations, there's a section where it deals specifically with sinkhole drainage design requirements. So this was generated several years ago. The county looked at several areas. They looked at Bowling Green, Kentucky, Clarksville, Tennessee, and looked at, well, they have the same situation and maybe even more, more so than here with sinkholes. So we looked at their sinkhole requirements and incorporated them into our subdivision regulations as well. So there are several things that need to be done, and you can read through the list and/or I can bore you with reading it myself. But anyway, I'm just to say that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. They have made improvements. I've asked that their geotechnical engineer be here to answer questions and kind of walk through the process for remediation, the process for closing sinkholes and whatnot. So I'll leave it at that. Didn't want to take up too much time, but there is, just to reemphasize, there's going to be a lot of work that needs to be done with this project. And I can answer some questions where we can bring the applicants up to talk to y'all about this.
Let's have questions for staff first, if anybody has anything in particular. Anything for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Mike?
Yes, sir.
Where do we get sinkholes? What causes sinkholes? Would you give us a technical definition of that?
Well, I'm, like I said, that's why I brought the geotech engineer. But from what I've gathered, the Nashville Basin was a huge prehistoric lake. And it was underwater for eons. And during those eons, aquatic life formed the limestone bedrock. The animals that died and settled in this area formed the limestone bedrock. And then, you know, the earth crust changed and the lake was drained, but the limestone remained. And when you have rainwater get into a crack or a crevice of this limestone bedrock, it eats away the limestone and forms fissures, cracks, crevices, and whatnot in the ground. And then eventually, the ground will settle and crack and create these sinkholes.
So when we mediate these, what's going to keep them from coming up somewhere else?
Yes, sir.
That's my biggest concern. Number one, we don't know where the water's coming from. We don't know where it's going to unless we can get several feet down under the ground and follow, because sinkholes usually are accompanied with an underground stream.
Yes, sir.
And so where's it coming from? Where's it going to? What's the pattern? Are we going to pop them up somewhere else if we close the ones we're dealing with here?
Yes, sir. So that's part of the entire subdivision design criteria. And like I said, I don't want to bore y'all, but there's all kinds of, to me, fascinating information available. The city has some great maps online of what they call dye tracings, where geotechnical engineers, or geotechnical engineers, geologists have gone in and put dye in a sinkhole and detected where it comes out, so they can get a path of where this water is moving. And here, and this is in conjunction with the county. So it's not just the city doing this. The county's paid for these dye tracings as well. So here is a map on the screen. They have, the red is where the dye was placed in a sinkhole, and the blue is where they've detected it. So they can kind of get an overall path of where the water is heading. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot in this Rockvale area. So this is Rockvale Meadows, and this is the Jurgen Property just to the south. And you can kind of see this little blip, maybe, maybe not. That's Snail Shell Cave, right there. And I'm surprised there hasn't been a dye test from Snail Shell Cave. But from what we've gathered, it's, it's all moving to the north. And it, a lot of this area comes out at what's called Military Springs, and then goes on to the river networks from there. So this is some of the stuff that they will have to look at, where the underground water movement is, what happens when you close a sinkhole, what happens to that water, where does it go when it can't do its normal thing? So, but there are, like I said, I hope the geotecs here that can talk at better length and more authority than I can. So, but Rutherford County, much of that area, you would be surprised. And let me pull up a map, just humor me just a second. I had it up before our maps crashed, our software crashed. But, so this little map speaks volumes to me. This was done back in 2000, well, it was a little bit later, but there was some really bad flooding in 2001, 2002 in the Murfreesboro/Rutherford County area. So the USGS commissioned a study, and they looked at what was the cause of these flooding issues. And they came up with this map which shows the gray areas are areas in the Rutherford County that drains to these sinkholes. A lot of the county, and this doesn't cover the whole county, but it's kind of a representation of what we're looking at. This is Lebanon Pike, this is Jefferson Pike, here's 99. The project area we're talking about's off to the southwest a little bit. So I just wanted to pull this up to let you see. Vast areas of the county don't drain to surface rivers, creeks, and streams. They drain to these sinkholes. These sinkholes then drain to the aquifers underground and then migrate on the way as they move out of the area. So all that being said, this is quite a common occurrence, sinkholes in Rutherford County. So we have, we've done a lot of investigation, what other communities are doing. We've incorporated this into our regulations. This is just, this area, this piece of property has a significant number of sinkholes. I think that's what my initial issues with this have been. So all that being said, you know, they've got a long way to go before this can be even, and construction can be worked on that, started on this project. So, but we have, we've seen this before, we've done this before. But, you know me, I'm county engineer, floodplain administrator, and chief worrywart. So I worry about what a new development will have, the impacts it will have, not just that new development, but the surrounding developments. I don't want anything new to happen to the adjacent property owners. That's what I struggle with on a day-to-day basis in our department, to make sure that whatever is constructed meets our regulations, but also does not impact the neighboring property owners. So we do everything we can, we try to go above and beyond to make sure that happens. So, and I'm sorry if I'm rambling, but that's, I'm passionate about drainage. And so that's some of the things that we'll look at. But just to say, there's a long way to go before this even starts moving, construction-wise, so.
Mr. Chairman. Thompson.
Appreciate the explanations there on the water just this morning. Me and I've got a business out that way, and I've got family that live out that way. I come through that school zone multiple times a week. This morning, as I come through, I got the school flashing light at 7:28, headed back to Murfreesboro, heading into Murfreesboro. Seven minutes later, about 300 feet, I arrive at the first traffic officer at the school. At that time, I take a picture, and I've got a picture backed up to Thompson Road where traffic, where we're showing interest to this subdivision. It's traffic is backed up to Thompson Road.
Sure.
Okay? By 7:42, I get to Veterans and 99. What I don't mention, or what I need to mention there at Veterans and 99, that's still a single-lane highway 99. I look in the rearview mirror, and over here to the side, it says, "Objects may be closer than they appear." There's a double axle dump truck that is splitting the yellow line at this intersection, almost runs over me trying to get in the left-hand turn lane. Traffic is so backed up, it's horrendous right through there. I can tell you, the preliminary work that needs to be done is one thing, but for the neighboring subdivision that you just mentioned, they can't get out of the subdivision when traffic is backed up to Thompson Road, because Thompson Road is past that entrance. I love the work, I'm pro-growth, but you're not going to hear me stop talking about traffic. I know we're working on it to identify how much traffic should be allowed on a single-lane road, whether it's 30 feet or 60 feet. So I think there's a lot of work to be done in terms of the infrastructure that's going to assure Rockvale Meadows folks that they can get in and out and get to work. So this is a complicated situation as far as I'm concerned when we're dealing with traffic. Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move to...
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I could follow up with Mike, follow up what Commissioner Whitworth was talking about a minute ago with sinkholes. Let me, let me just ask, minor sinkholes, there's a number of them out there. What's the process, I don't mean to go through the whole long-drawn-out process, but the process of closing one of those sinkholes, long-term viability, success of closing one of those sinkholes, and let's just say 10, 20, 30 years from now, those sinkholes reappear and a house sinks, is, are there liabilities attached to that, or is it just buyer beware? Is there an answer to those type of questions? What are the, how successful are we in making sure that those sinkholes are closed and closed permanently forever?
I could answer that, but I think having the geotech engineer here, if you've ever looked at a geotechnical engineering report, there might be three pages of actual data in there, but six or eight pages of disclaimers. So without having, you know, all the information, I would say, I would defer to a geotechnical engineer. But we've done this multiple times, multiple places. It is very expensive. You have to excavate out the entire sinkhole to the open throat. You put down this fabric, you put down bigger boulders at the bottom, and then as you work your way up, you lower and lower boulders and close the fabric over the top, fill it with dirt material on top of that, and you direct the water away. You don't allow water back into that crack that's caused that original sinkhole. So that's, in a nutshell, that's an easy way to say what's happening. But the eight-plus years I've been here, I've not been aware of any, I mean, that's a short time. I've not been aware of any sinkhole failures on remediated sinkholes, roads, houses, lots, whatnot.
Doug, any of these particular lots that have a sinkhole on that lot that's built upon, are they flagged in any way?
I believe, and might correct me if I'm wrong, I do believe if there's any, that there's notes on the plat as far as where the remediation is, if there's certain lots that have compaction on them, that's going to have to be marked as well. And again, might correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that is the case on the final plats.
Right. We have the ability to do what's called a critical lot grading plan. So we can have a mass grading for the subdivision itself to fix something, but we also have the ability to, each plot house that comes into us, say, okay, this is in an area of special concern, we need a critical lot grading plan on just this house itself. So we have that ability as well.
Other questions? If not, I'll ask that Matt Taylor come forward, SEC.
Thank you, Commissioner. Matt Taylor of SEC, located 850 Middle Tennessee Boulevard here in Murfreesboro. I've got my client Steve Pierce, as well as the geotech engineer Jerry Gammon here with us today as well. Did want to address a couple of questions and things I'd heard. So we will do a mass grading plan. We do that with almost all of our developments with our Section 1. And so we know we're going to need some fill material on the lower and eastern portions of the project, and so we would like to make sure we're excavating that from the appropriate places on site, moving that material one time. So that mass grading plan will give Mike the ability to review our complete drainage plan with Section 1 construction plans. With Section 1 construction plans, we will show that we comply with those sinkhole design requirements. The plans that you have already give that opportunity. We just don't do the detailed calculations at the preliminary plan phase. We do those at the construction plan phase. And so each of those sinkholes that will stay will have overflows designed around them. We're not going to rely entirely up on a sinkhole to take on an area's drainage. The good thing about these sinkholes that we're talking about leaving open and remediating is they're at the top of the hill, basically. And so there's very little water that goes into those today. The question comes, will water come out of them? Typically, at the top of the hill, they do not. I'm not going to say that is a never situation, but thankfully, with it being at the top of the hill, typically they do not. As Mike said, these are, this is a common occurrence, these are common features that we deal with in Rutherford County. And Mike's concern with impact on surrounding developments is second only to mine and my clients. So Mike may get the phone calls, it's my livelihood, my client's money, my money, at the end of the day, my reputation, at the end of the day, that's on the line here. And so I'm the one stamping these drawings. And so again, we will comply with those sinkhole requirements, we'll go above and beyond. We're very familiar with those sinkhole design requirements. A lot of the things in those requirements, we did even before you adopted them. So we are not naive of sinkholes. A couple of questions that Commissioner Phillips asked is about success of closures. I think the best way to show success is by showing you good examples. My partner, Jamie Reed, he built, not the house he lives in now, but the house previous, he built directly on top of a sinkhole that they repaired, and that was built 20-some-odd years ago. And that house is still standing out in Apple Tree Court. It's on the north side of Murfreesboro, just across from the VA golf course. And then you asked about disclosures. My client has to disclose any sinkhole that's repaired on a lot of record where a house is built, that has to be built into the sale to those people. And so we do have to disclose that. And then Mr. Thompson, I heard your comments about the traffic. I think that we're going to help Rockvale Meadows, we're going to provide that connection point on the south. Today, Rockvale Meadows has a single point of entry onto 99. We're going to give, we're going to make that connection, that connection will happen with our Section 1. And so that's actually going to give them a more southerly connection onto Highway 99, to try to get them further away from the school traffic and give them more gaps there. So we think that will help in combination with our turn lanes that we'll be installing. Outside of that, I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can bring up the geotech and he can describe in detail his experience with sinkholes, closing them, leaving them open, whichever order you guys want to do that.
If I could ask one quick follow-up question. Matt, I appreciate those answers, and thank you for doing that.
Yes, sir.
I know the relationship you have with the county, and I know that you look the way a lot of us do for the long-term, best interest of the county, and I can't tell you how much this commissioner appreciates that. The type of homes that are going to be built, can you give me an idea of the construction materials and square footage of those homes? It's kind of refreshing that we're not talking about a PUD for a change in larger lots. It's actually kind of cool.
Yes, sir. So these are, again, they're 15,000 square foot lots. We're anticipating these homes to cost upwards of $600,000 or more. With that, I would anticipate, you know, all masonry materials, and that your home square footages are going to be in the, you know, I would say 3,000. You know, there might be some in the twos that are maybe a single-story, but I would say you're going to have a lot of that in the 3,000 square foot range if I'm doing some, if I'm working backwards from 600s at our current price per square foot. So they're going to be sizable homes with big yards and big lots. And one thing I probably should have said is, you know, we've heard a lot about Rockvale Meadows and some of the drainage issues that they've had. I think some of that is directly attributable to the fact that they were limited on what they could do on the lots themselves with their grading and drainage. It was a septic subdivision. As you all know, you can't impact the soils on those lots. So you're very limited to grading around your house and protecting those soils to those existing elevations. Here, I have to protect the 15 acres of soil up front, the rest of the site, I can manipulate those grades to make sure our houses are safe and that we can provide the maximum protection, not only for us, but also our downstream neighbors. So we've got a lot more flexibility and freedom and ability to design a correct development than Rockvale Meadows had. And I would also say that, you know, if Rockvale Meadows was built today, I think that Mike's department wouldn't allow some of the things that I see going on in there. They're very much between them and their inspectors. Those sorts of items, I just don't see those happening anymore. So I think a lot of things would be different.
Matt, let me, commissioners, I'm sitting here looking at a plat here. You have taken some of the larger sinkholes and turned those into common areas, and you also have detention there. You want to explain that some, or?
Yes, sir. So essentially, we're going to try to leave those in a very natural form, or maybe even make them larger where we can, Commissioner Reed. And so we say they're detention because if they're acting like they're detaining today, then they will continue to act that way in the future. Our main detention pond out front is located in the central part of the development where Mike is doing there. We've got some on the east side of this stream that bisects the property. Those are going to be much smaller in nature. We just say they're kind of a, they will act like detention, but they really won't go into our calculations for detention. We'll rely on this pond up front to provide all of our detention to meet the pre and post, but those will provide some detention in some form back there.
So they absorbed some of your lot numbers, is that...
Yes, sir. They did. We shifted a lot of things around, and so we actually shifted some things forward to avoid these larger sinkholes, these larger karst features. And if we get in here and we decide, you know, we may lose some lots, buildable lots from this plan as we get into our construction plan. If we get in there and we start saying, hey, it's going to cost us $100,000 to fill this, that doesn't make any sense. And so this would be the maximum. If we need to cut that down, we will. I mean, that happens every day on our construction plans. You know, regardless of what my client likes, the safety of our new residents, safety of our existing residents will take precedence over the lot count inside the development when we get to a construction plan level.
And this is preliminary?
Yes, sir. And you all will see this again with a final plat, to see the final lot arrangement, what lots we cut out, those sorts of things.
Other questions, or Mr. Taylor? Do you have someone else to come forward?
Yeah, Jerry, if Jerry would come up. Jerry Gammon is with Geo Services. Jerry works on, inside of our projects in Rutherford County. I'd say he's probably on 90% of our residential projects, so he's very familiar with our geology and our rock and our dirt here. So I'll let him go from here. Jerry Gammon with Geo Services, Lebanon, Tennessee, is where we're located. Anyone have any questions for me this morning? I think you guys have done a really good job explaining the sinkholes and everything, but if there are any specific questions of how we're going to remediate and how we're going to do some things, I'd be happy to answer those.
Just wanted to follow up on the question earlier to Mike, as it relates to closing a sinkhole, then building on top of a sinkhole. What's the long-term potential issues that, building on top of that? When they're closed, are they closed permanently like they never existed? Or is it possible that 30 years down the road, 20 years down the road, that they could reappear?
So I'll go back to similar to what Matt said with his partner and development he has. I mean, I have remediated several sinkholes. I've been doing this industry for 20-plus years now. At this time, I've not... At this time, I've not had to go back on a residence to do any kind of secondary remediation activities to a sinkhole. I'm going to remediate sinkholes inside of a building footprint differently than I'm going to remediate out in a green space. I will tell you that. How I'm going to remediate that today is going to be specific to the karst feature that exists at that time. Each feature has its own characteristics, and then we're going to remediate those specific to those characteristics that we evaluate. When we make our recommendations, our recommendations are to not come back. To sit here and tell you that something may never happen, that's not fair for anybody to say. If anybody says that they will not have anything happen, that's a strong statement. But I, my goal is to never come back to fix anything.
Mr. Gammon, have, Mike has stated that this is an unusually large number of sinkholes in this development. Have you or your company dealt with this many in one development before?
We have. We do, we, we've worked on several subdivision projects that are very similar to what we're looking at here for Yergin. So this is something that we will work with Matt and the design team members when they're doing their civil design. We will have meetings with them to understand the features that are present, understand the mass grading plan, the cut fill. And some of these with just the mass grading, the small ones that were mentioned earlier, they may be eliminated through the mass grading plan that, that Matt will have in order for this site to balance. Some of those will require fill. You know, we will want to look at those areas that are going to require fill and we'll make those recommendations prior to the mass grading getting taken place. But this is not the first time we've seen a, a project of, of this size with this many features.
One follow-up. You ever been in a situation to where you said, no, this is not advisable to close this sinkhole?
Absolutely. And the developers have to make the decision that's best for them and their development. We provide recommendations to the developers and we let, let them make the decision that's best for them.
It usually comes down to money. It gets to be so cost prohibitive that it, you know, it's not worth remediating a sinkhole because it's just too expensive, so.
I will tell you, I'm working on one today that they're spending more money on the lot to fix it than they're going to get out of the lot. I don't understand why, but they cannot lose a lot. It happens. Don't understand it, we're here to provide recommendations for them.
So if y'all have got any more questions, I was going to go over an example of sinkhole remediation and drainage correction, but I'll, I'll let y'all dictate what, what do y'all want to do. We still need to talk about traffic.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Goach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the sake of argument, let's say 20 years from now, one of the sinkhole remediation fails. What options will the homeowner have? I mean, would they be responsible for losing a house, or?
Well, I think it's something, you know, it's hard to answer that question because, I mean, what remediation was done? Was the depth of overburden over the top of the bedrock that's underneath their foundations? You know, what was the failure that occurred? You know, it's, it's hard for anybody to answer that question today. I think majority of where your karst features are on the backside of the property, you've got a real shallow overburden, okay? I know you mentioned the Bowling Green is, was discussed earlier. We've got a very different scenario here on this property than we have at the Bowling Green, the Corvette, where we had the big, large soil overburden over the top or better. We don't have that here. So the remediation here are going to be totally different than what we had there on the backside of the property. And if something fails, you know, we'll, we'll have to make the recommendations on, on how to fix that at that time.
Would that, would that be something that, that the developer would come back and fix? Or would they have, would the homeowner take, have to take some kind of legal action to get them to even answer the phone?
So, I mean, I'm not trying to plug anything, but we all, we all need to make sure we have sinkhole insurance on our residences for, for personal, personal use. And that's not a plug for any insurance, but, you know, in the industry that we are, you know, most of our insurance does not cover sinkhole insurance. And we, you know, we as individuals need to have that. Maybe that's something that we may need to encourage. I'll talk with the developer and they need to encourage their, their potential buyer, the prospect buyers to include that as part of a service. But I don't know who's responsible because 20 years later, then we're, we're beyond the limits of liability, right?
Correct. And the reason I'm asking these questions, I've represented a lot of rural areas where homes were built in the 70s and 80s, no fault to any current administration, a home that should have never been built. And it falls on the homeowners. And so that was spiking my questions on what recourse would they have if something failed? And so it would be basically possibly sinkhole insurance.
Yes. Yes. And I mean, and, and when an individual buys this particular lot, they, they know what they're buying at that time. We're not going to, we're not going to hide anything from them. Everything will be disclosed, how, what was seen initially, what was seen or done during the construction to provide them with, with a padded, critical lot later. I think we're going to more than likely have to provide back to the developer who will then provide it back to the county. So we will, we will work in conjunction with the developer on, on getting these letters and documentations for the potential buyers. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Want to do something else, Mike?
Well, I was going to brag on our diligent work that we've done in other places. On Old Nashville Highway, development in this area right here is called Sycamore Grove. And this is the May 2010 flood event, and you can see several pockets of water building up. So this is another sinkhole volume sensitive area. With, with sinkholes, it's not the rate of runoff, it's the volume of water that's leaving the site. So what we ask the design engineers to do is look at the volume of water and ways to hold back more volume of water. So what they ended up doing is creating these two massive stormwater retention slash detention areas. So these are extremely large stormwater storage areas that you'll see in this, this property as well. So what, from all indications, we've had a lot of success. I mean, we haven't had another 2010 storm event, but we've had several rain events over and over and over again. And we've got, gotten compliments from the surrounding neighbors saying, hey, you've, you've helped us, you've helped us. And that's what I, I stress over and over again is protect the new development, but also what can we do to help the surrounding property owners? Can we, can we help them out? And I ask sometimes begrudgingly that usually they'll help us out with, you know, and, and don't have any issues, but we try everything we can to help the surrounding property owners. And that's what we will do in this as well. We will have to look at, so Rockville Meadows has this creek that flows through here and drains to a large sinkhole. This sinkhole fills up and then it comes down to a stormwater pond here. And like Matt said, because they're all on conventional septic systems, the lots themselves couldn't be graded elevated, but the houses could. So there are several lots that when this pond fills up, it, it's in the back of their house, their back of their yards, all the way up to the house. So we, we've got the ability here to do a mass grading plan to elevate the houses, elevate the yards, over-design our, our stormwater network to help downstream. So that's, that's some of the things that we'll be looking at. But going back to Mr. Thompson, traffic, traffic is, is a big concern as well. And the state is working on widening 99 up from Caseen up to Old Fort. The next phase, from what I've been told, is Caseen down past veterans, which is not this area, not to the schools, but we've, we've asked that they also look at widening the schools, 99 through here, past the schools to help the, the morning and afternoon congestions. So if I had the ability to go back in a time machine and plead and, and say, a major arterial is not the place to put a three-school campus, I would do that and, and yell at the top of a mountain. But because a major arterial is, is designed to move traffic and not have a school zone. So that's, that's just a side issue. But traffic is still going to be a concern. They are making improvements, but that school zone is, is what's holding up that area. You've got people coming in, trying to drop their kids off, people going out after they've dropped their kids off. So that's, that's an area of concern for us as well.
Mr. Thompson, I have to tell you, I come through there at four minutes after eight. I come through the school zone, took me four minutes. It was clear as a veil. Everybody had left until I passed Subway. And then I hit traffic at Salem Landing. And then I picked up the same thing you did, just trying to get the veterans and then on into Murfreesboro. So it shifts, is what it does. And yeah, exactly. And then we're in the process out there on that same road of getting Salem Landing with, what, 500 houses or so in there? So it's, it's, it's there. But any more questions for those we have here? If not, Commissioners, I will turn it over to you for discussion and whatever else you need.
Mr. Chairman, I know that there's a lot of questions and concerns, and we're developing property now in Rutherford County that probably 20 years ago would, would be an undesirable piece of property. I'm impressed with the plan that they put together. I'm also impressed with the type of development that it is, and that's the type of development that I'd kind of like to see in Rutherford County. We don't have probably enough of those. And I think some of my questions have been answered. And from a preliminary perspective, I move to approve, subject to all the staff comments.
A second. Have a motion to approve and a second. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Have one no. Right, we have approved Yergin Property 231001. Moving now into 6B1, submitted for final plat approvals. Southern Harmony, Section 1, Phase 1, 232007. 12 lots on 51.72 acres, zone PUD, located along Franklin Road. Ulti Homes, Tennessee, limited partnership applicant. Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The preliminary plan for this development was approved back in April of, well, 2021. It's been about two years ago, excuse me. This plan does appear to be consistent with that approved preliminary plan that was, that was brought before you. These lots that we're looking at here are going to be for the model homes and also the sales center. They are going to be served by conventional septic as opposed to the step system because as of right now, the step system has not been installed. There, there's been a lot of working back and forth between the state, CUD, the county and everything. And after a lot of discussion, it was determined that the best course of action would be that these have their own individual septic systems. There are going to have to be a couple of easements, especially for a couple of the lots down on the south side. I think that's five and six, if I'm looking at them right. But you'll see that on the plat. This is a little bit of a different type of situation because these roads are all private roads, as you recall. When this development was approved for their, their PUD pattern book, these are all going to be private roads, no public roads. So we've had them add some notes to the plat that made it very clear that the county was not going to be responsible for any of the maintenance or anything of, of any of these roads. We wanted to make sure that that was spelled out very plainly on the plats. Regarding our comments, they have been addressed. They appear to be in good order. I think we still have a, we're still working with them a little bit on the staphyre hydrant spacing, but beyond that, this plan appears to be in good order and we'd recommend approval.
What's the basic size of those lots, Doug?
These lots here?
Yeah.
Let's see. Zoom in a little bit, Mike. Looks like about...
All over the place.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're kind of all, some of those are just for the soil areas, too. They're a lot short on, I'm sorry, Mr. Phillips didn't just have that just off the top of my head. But they would have to meet the minimum of that, of that district, of what their planned development was. And I mean, these lots appear to be large enough where that's not going to be an issue.
Mr. Chairman, this is, this plat design is unusual.
It is.
Is there a reason for that?
This is a company that we don't do just a whole lot of work with. So, I mean, there's nothing, it's different than what we would anticipate, but, I mean, it meets the minimum requirements that we have set. But, you know, we, we see most of our plats from a couple of the major firms in town, so we're kind of used to what their layouts look like. We just don't do a whole lot of work with, with this company as all.
I mean, there looks like a lot of land that's not used. Will they?
There's a lot of open space.
Plan to come back and develop that later?
Well, some of, some of those larger areas, well, actually, and there's the parcel area table, those parcels there, you can kind of see, like Mike was saying, it's kind of all over the place. 19,000, one's 32,000, 26,000, kind of all over the map. The, some of the larger lots, especially where the sales center is, that's going to be on the same lot where the amenity center is. So we'll, you know, we already did see a site planned for that. But as time goes on, yeah, most of that area there where 3,000, that's going to be the area where that, that large amenity center is. So that's probably not going to change much beyond what you're, what you're looking at there because that was a very sizable site on that property.
So yes, they're going to have like a large community center, pool, pickleball, all kinds of athletic courts, tennis courts.
Walking trails.
Yeah, walking trails and everything. So they're going to have their own little community center right there. Model homes to the side here. These lots are probably larger than you'll see in the, in the subdivision, the subdivision that are going to be on the step system. These have to be larger because like Doug said, they're on the conventional septic system. So I do want to point out something, and Doug mentioned it. These are private streets, private drainage, private everything. They have to design to the county standards, be inspected, but it will be set up and there will be a perpetual maintenance fund that's set up with the help of our illustrious county attorney. We will work on, and the, the developer submitting, going through the process to make sure that that's done, to, to make sure that there's an adequate amount of money to, to take care of these. It's because it won't be the county that's fixing the roads, fixing the drainage, everything. It's just the homeowners association. So we had them add several notes about this to make sure that it's clearly stated, clearly understood that they, they will be on the hook for this and not the county.
Just want to make sure I'm reading this. Mr. Commissioner Wright, in answer, in looking for the answer to her question, what I'm reading in the document here says, these, these lots are... in the document here says, "These lots are for model homes and sales office."
That's correct.
So I'm assuming there's going to be a lot more homes added at some point.
Oh, yeah, the, the total amount of lots in this subdivision was over like 1,100 lots. So this is just the, the very beginning. They want to get these set up so they'll have the models to be able to show to people to actually sell them the, the property.
Thank you, that's what I understood.
So it's undermining that these model homes will be model homes until the subdivision's built out, and then eventually they will be sold and people will live in these. So they're, they're going to be built to be lived in eventually.
Mr. Chairman?
Questions?
I have a question. Mike, I'm seeing the star beside the lot number, but I'm not finding alleged on that.
Okay.
Is, I don't think these are in the flood zone, but I do see that little star by the lot number on the first page?
Yes, sir.
Or second page?
This is several, five pages of, of notes and might take me a minute to find that as well.
I don't, I don't know why it starred.
The applicant, could y'all?
I'm going to say we'll ask the applicant forward, maybe they can get that answer for you.
Instead of me struggling to try to find.
Hi, Abigail Overstreet with Wilson and Associates. We also have Polte and Thomason Hutton with us as well, if you have any additional questions. But for the asterisk, so if you look at Note 18, which we can add it to a separate call out, we can take it off of the note, but Note 18 states that lots designated with an asterisk are designated as critical lots, and an individual lot grading plan showing the proposed house and other improvements will be required.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question.
It might be a good idea just as a, you maybe put that on next to one of the asterisks on the lots, just to say, "See Note 18."
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be good.
But all in all, it's, the plat is in good order. They've addressed, I believe, everything we've asked them to do.
I'm sorry, I might have missed, I'm kind of hard of hearing. Who are you?
I'm Abigail Overstreet with Wilson and Associates.
Okay, where are you from? Where's your office? Where's your company located?
Our office in Franklin, Tennessee, and I'm from Spring Hill, Tennessee.
Very good. Who's the engineering firm?
Thomason Hutton.
Doug, we usually see kind of an overall plan and preliminary type of things, and we're not even seeing really a preliminary plan for the development of this that, that I can, I can see.
We, we did see a preliminary plan for this. It was, what did I say? Oh, April of '21, so it's been almost a couple of years. So it's, this is the very north end of the, of the development along Franklin Road is where this part of it is.
Is, is that possible? Do you, Mike, do you have that? Any way you could pull that up so we could kind of take a look at that overall plan?
Yeah, we, we actually, they, we asked them to submit that and they did. Let's just pull it up real quick.
Rob, you say?
While they're pulling that up, if, if you could, the, the type of homes that you're planning on building, construction materials, those type of things?
I can't confirm that, but...
Mr. Phillips, I apologize. I thought I had put that on the network. I, we do have a copy of it. I remember I printed it for the file, but I apologize, I may not have put it on the network like I thought I did.
John Claxton, Thomason Hutton Engineering. I'm the design engineer on this project, project manager. Our office is located in East Nashville, and we've been on this project for close to three years now, from, from then till now. To answer your question, this is a Del Webb community, which is an age target, or age-restricted 55 and over retirement community. They are, I'm trying to think of the square footage. You could, there, there are three ranges of square footage, and it's all per the approved pattern book. I haven't thought about this for a while. But yeah, they're, they're high quality, they have a pretty good price range. It's a very desirable community overall, but...
So this is the Del Webb property?
Correct.
That's answers every question that I had, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Further comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This one has been approved. Southern Harmony Section 1, Phase 232007, final plat approval. Moving now into C, submitted for site plan approval. Number 1, Overa Concrete Warehouse, 233005, construction of 9,000 square feet of warehouse area, Zone CG, located along Shavelable Highway. Overa Concrete is the applicant, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This property was rezoned in May of 2022. This kind of came about, not necessarily as a zoning enforcement action, but the applicant came in to pull a permit for the warehouse on the property and come to find out, he was running a business there and it wasn't zoned for it. So that's why it ended up going through the zoning process. So they went through the zoning and are now submitting for site plan approval. You'll see that the, the warehouse that they're asking for, most of the improvements on the site plan, again, this is a, a different company than we're used to working with, but most of the improvements that we've asked for have been made. There are still some tweaks, I think, that need to be made to the overall landscape plan. I don't think that's anything that will, needs to hold up any approval or anything. That's something we can work with the applicant on as we're moving forward through this. But you know, it's basically going to be a, an area for, you know, construction material, vehicles and whatnot. And they're just trying to bring the site into compliance with the county regulations. So with that, I'll answer any questions, and Mike may have some comments regarding the engineering on the property.
No, they've addressed most of our comments. We do need to, you know, have a building codes and fire marshal finalize their, their comments. But the, will be, the new warehouse will be in this area here, and the house will stay and this, this other building here will stay. So and they're, they'll improve this area as well.
I'd move we approve with staff's comments.
Motion to approve, staff comments. And second, Commissioner Ava Water. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? It is approved, number 233005. Moving now to number 2, C2 Toy Storage LLC, 233006, construction of 82,200 square feet, a mini warehouse and coverage storage area, Zone CS and REM, located along West Jefferson Pike. Toy Storage LLC is the applicant, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. This site, as Chairman Reed said, actually is dual-zoned, zone commercial services and residential medium density. The site plan shows kind of the differentiation between those two. The area that's zoned residentially really doesn't have any part to play in the development of this site. It's just a smaller portion. I guess that'd be on the northern end of the property. But with that being said, we actually have seen several site plan renditions over the last several years on this. Originally, we saw this in 2015, most recently we saw in 2018. We would see some, the plans for it, they'd be approved and nothing would, would ever happen with it. So they're hoping it gets off the, the ground this time. The current design is similar to previous designs. There are some differences. The current version is slightly larger than what was approved in the past. We did send comments over to the applicant's design engineer. Most of those comments have been addressed. There are a couple of calculations I would like to see on there. I didn't really, at least it was difficult for me to determine an overall lot coverage. It appears that they're going to be fine because there, there's a, a good chunk of the site that they're not developing, but there are limits in the CS as far as their available lot coverage. Just want to make sure that gets on there and floor area ratio, make sure that those meet our requirements. But with that, again, I'll turn it over to Mike for any comments he may have. I know there's a lot of drainage concerns with this particular project, so with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Thank you, Doug. No, they, they've addressed most of our comments. It's essentially a rehash of previous mini storage site plans. They'll have it on both sides of this little creek that runs through here. They've sized these culverts to handle the flow that, and, and created a little swell dip that allows, if there is a bigger flow that can flow up and over this, this little driveway here and, and not impact the, the buildings or streams up, property upstream. So they, they've met our, our comments and, and are good to go.
Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff, please. I'm assuming, I see a page in here called auto turn. I'm assuming that includes fire trucks here since there is a reference to that in a little picture. Is 50 feet sufficient to move our fire trucks around this piece of property? Is that the normal standard?
That is our new, that, that's Josh's wish list for the fire truck that he wants to buy. It's a little bit longer fire truck, and that's the, the template that we're asking
That's not, that's not just for Joshua, that's for public safety.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve, subject to all staff comments.
Motion to approve. Second, Commissioner Ava Water. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? It is approved, Toy Storage, number 233006. Moving now to C63, Damica Meditation Center, 233008, construction of 3,000 square feet, community assembly area, Zone RM, located along G Road. Damica Meditation Center is the applicant, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Site plan for this property was last approved by the Planning Commission back in 2019. At that time, they were looking to do something a little bit different. It was actually going to be in addition to the main structure on the property. It was going to be connected to the existing house, and then it was a, a larger structure. It was all going to be interconnected. Since that time, they've kind of rethought their plans and now are just proposing a standalone 3,000 square foot facility. The existing structure that's on the property will remain and will be used for residential purposes, as I understand it, for the, the monks that currently live there. Most of our comments that we've submitted have been addressed. There's a couple of small dimensions and things that I, I would like to see on there. One of our comments had to do with putting a dimension on the access roads on, along G Road. You can see there is one, 23 feet on one of the existing access points, but it doesn't look like they put one on the, the other one. It's kind of a circular drive right there. So from that standpoint, again, those are fairly minor comments. But with that, unless Mike has anything further, we feel this is in, is in good shape and we'd recommend approval with it.
Commissioners?
If, if I could be so bold as to ask, what's a meditation center?
Well, it's, as I understand it, it, they're Buddhist monks and it's part of their religious services, and I'm not going to pretend that I know a whole lot about how that works, but it's, that's part of their, their worship.
Would it be a worship facility, like a church?
Similar, yes.
Very good.
We, we classify it as a community assembly use, similar to a church.
Thank you.
This is on their current grounds, right, Doug?
I'm sorry, what, Mr.?
This is on their current property, right?
Yes, sir, it is, yes.
Because all that existing, looks like they're abandoning, well, I'm confused. There is an existing church and buildings there, right?
Right, and those buildings will continue to be used by the, the monks as just strictly residential, is what that'll turn into.
Okay.
And I think they're using it now for that. It's kind of dual purpose, but I think, and Mr. Enick Jarrell from Hudson Steel is here, he can correct me if I'm wrong, but most of that is used, it's all kind of like a joint, joint use, if you will. They use it for the worship services, but they also use it for residential purposes. And when they build the new meditation area, that'll just turn, the existing building will just turn into strictly residential at that point.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I'd move we approve, subject to staff comments.
Motion been made. Second has been given. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? It has been approved. We'll move now down into number seven, Staff Reports and Other Business, Mr. Demossi.
Yes, sir, thank you. Staff is happy to bring to you today, just a, just to give you a quick overview of our proposed amendments to Chapter 10 of our zoning ordinance, and that deals with the flood hazard district. Every so often, FEMA will come back and will re-study some of the streams in the county. And when they do that, there are certain changes that need to be made to our ordinances. What you're going to see here, we're not, I mean, we can go into as much or as little detail with this as you want. This is just kind of, just giving you a, just a real high-level overview. When it comes down to the process that we are using as far as our floodplain administration, nothing really is changing. We've taken the updated model from the state that they've sent us, and we've made the changes to our ordinance to reflect the changes to the model. Probably the largest change is right there, Mike is highlighting right now. We have to put all of the different flood maps and their effective dates into the ordinance. We used to have it such as where we could just put the, the maps that have been identified or have been adopted per la, la, la. We didn't have to put all the maps down, but somewhere in the past, say within the last 10 years or so, they came back and said, "No, you have to have every individual panel number in your ordinance." So that's why it looks the, the way it does. But that's really the, the largest change as to what we're proposing. But when it comes to just the everyday administration of our flood ordinance, and Mike Hughes, our county engineer, he is the floodplain administrator and designated as such, really, we're not changing anything as far as the regulations and how we enforce them. It's just updating our regulations to be consistent with the model and to put those new maps onto the, into the ordinance, I should say. This is something that has to be finished and adopted by May 9th of this year. We are proposing to have a public hearing on this at the March meeting, which would also require a public hearing at the Board of Commissioners, which would be in April, so that gives us plenty of time to do that. So this is really just to introduce you to it before bringing it to the Planning Commission next month at the night meeting. But with that, Mike, I'll turn it over to you if you had any additional comments you wanted to make on this.
If you have any trouble sleeping, start reading this, it'll put you right out. But essentially, it was, FEMA sent us their format, and we had to adjust it to meet our rules and regulations. So FEMA only requires that the finished floor be one foot above the base flood elevation. That's for the finished floor of the house, non-livable structure, anything like that. We are a little bit different. We are at a higher standard. Non-livable space, yes, we allow one foot above, but livable space is essentially three feet above. We've got a higher factor, factor of safety that we've had in, in force for, for years and years. But we just feel that it's important to make sure that, that all of these regulations meet our current regulations and that everything's okay. But again, if you, this will put you right out if you, if you want.
And just to stress, yeah, and just to stress again, this, there's no change to how we're administering this. It's, it's really, this is something we're doing because quite frankly, we have to do it.
Quick question, if I could. Livable, non-livable, a livable, non-livable could be an attached garage. Is that correct?
Right.
Attached, as well as a, a non-attached garage and a storage building, that kind of thing. So if it's attached, the garage could be three feet lower than the living space?
Two feet lower, two feet lower, yes, sir. So it's just a one foot above is all we're requiring for the non-livable space.
Other questions? Other questions?
And I don't think we need a motion for this or anything. We're just, this is really more for your information and we're, like I said, we're going to put this on to next month's night meeting.
I'm sure everyone sitting out here has read this before they got here this morning.
We'll, we'll have a test on it at the public hearing.
Unfortunately, they sent their, their regulations and then we had to update it to meet our, that's why you see all this red stuff. That's what took so long.
I started going through and I said, well, this has got the black and the red print. So this is, we've got it all right here. So this is totally official right here, so. All right, sir. I'm glad we've, we've got that taken care of. Any, anything else should come forward.
No, sir, I don't have anything. Mike, do you?
Got it covered. All right, remember our next Planning Commission meeting will be on March 14th here at this courthouse building at 6 o'clock. And we look forward to seeing each and every one of you here. Thank you for being here this morning. We are adjourned.